We'll call the regular board meeting to order. I will do the flex thing. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, approval of the agenda. I have a motion to approve it. I move that we approve the agenda as we have it presented in class. All right, all those in favor, so if you're probably saying aye?
Aye.
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 All right, agenda is approved. Public comments on agenda items. Okay, none, awesome. Board member comments. The end, would you like to say something?
On agenda items?
Well, no, this is just board member comments.
Um, I have some, but I might just save that for the end.
Okay. Not a whole lot to report, other than the builders club has gotten started, and that's always exciting for me. And I have helped one of our audience members, which is exciting for me. That's probably enough. I attended a meeting, I think it was last week, there was a lunch meeting with the presidents of the kids have school boards.
Oh.
Got invited on it a week out. It was perhaps kind of just a kind of a meet and greet, and to maybe see where we, where our individual districts are, and how we feel about things going into, especially, I think, more or less into the legislative year. We plan on having another meeting before the end of the year, and then maybe perhaps trying to make it a quarterly thing amongst the presidents, at least within our immediate region. So, I thought it was pretty good. I won't say I was in something before that, but I don't remember.
It was the breakfast with the Sandy Hook parent, didn't you go to that?
That was a couple, that was before last meeting.
Okay.
Spencer.
At the high school, we're about halfway through the first trimester, and we have a blood drive tomorrow, leadership's doing it, and we have, I think we have 45 people signed up.
Wow.
And our fall sports are winding down the regular season, but our soccer and volleyball team are hopefully going to make playoffs, they have a really good chance, and then some of our cross-country runners as well. So, yeah.
Awesome, thank you. And Laura is on an excused absence, right, and John can't say the same.
We'll find out.
Yeah.
He usually has a good reason.
All right, so we'll move on to the consent items, and I will take the motion to accept the consent agenda. Go ahead.
I move that we approve the consent agenda, for certain.
Any discussion or items to be pulled out?
I just want to thank our superintendent and her staff for when they're getting in and rewriting and making things perfect, and I'm reading through them and I'm going, wow, you know, like, our foster guideline there, and it's really thorough, and it does a really good job of making sure we take care of those kids, and all of them were great, so, good job.
For once, I don't have any questions or comments.
Did you come early?
I think I did have one concern, and mostly it was in policy 3220, which is the freedom of expression.
Mm-hmm.
There was a lot of red on that policy change. I guess I'm a little bit concerned about student publications at least not having some sort of direct oversight by a faculty member before things get put out. But I understand, you know, creative speech and all that stuff, but...
Although there are student editors, they still get, have an editorial level with a faculty advisor. Currently, in our district, we have, we do not have a student newspaper, we don't have the interest at this point in time in having one. We're always looking forward to having that opportunity again, but we do still have an editorial view with, just like a regular newspaper has an editor, even though the student editors put together a document, whether, in this case, most likely, probably the yearbooks, there is a faculty advisor, and the administrators are also responsible to make sure that there isn't anything that, while freedom of expression is encouraged, that violates any of the other issues, like the unwarranted invasions of privacy, or other inciting to violence, or disruption, or any of the other items. So, we, there is oversight.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Mm-hmm.
All right, no other discussion, I will call for a vote on this, all those who are accepting the consent agenda, so if you're probably listening.
Aye.
Aye. And I apologize, I'm having to do this by paper tonight.
Do you want my computer?
What's that?
Do you want my computer?
No, I think I'm just as fast anyway.
Okay. It's got hair in it.
Yeah. We're for board development and linkage, so superintendent's up to it.
I have to look up there, because I just lost my computer. So, we're going to start with our budget status report, Ashley.
Okay, so this month is going to be a little bit interesting, because we're still doing updates on August, but then still presenting for September, so you're going to get a little bit of both, and the next month, you're going to have three months, you're going to have an update on August, because our books will be closed on last fiscal year, then you're going to have the actual forecast five reports for September, because the books will have officially closed, and we will recruit everything back to August, and then you'll have October. So, I'm going to start with an update on August. Where we're at currently, there's still a few entries left to be done, it's not going to have too large of an impact, so, capital projects, we're sitting at just about 2.5 million. So, when we're looking at these final columns of numbers for August, this is basically what our starting fund balances are going to be for the 18, 19 school year. So, we're at about 2.5 million for capital projects, 2.5 million for debt service, ASB's looking like it's going to be around 334,000, and then our transportation vehicle fund, with the depreciation payment, we're at 152,563. Now, a little update regarding transportation, we had that bus accident with, well, technically they had two bus accidents, but one of the buses were able to be fixed, that was the accident that happened here in front of Hawkins.
During?
Eleven thousand dollars worth of damage, insurance company paid, that one's done. Our small bus, that was hit head-on, the bus was totaled. So, luckily, we switched WSRMP, so that, so the insurance company's purchasing us a brand new bus.
Wow.
So, we're working on quotes and everything right now to get that, but we'll have a brand new bus in our fleet. The good thing about that is it ups our depreciation payments in the future, without us having to pay off the money for a new bus.
Was that a new bus that was wrecked, or it was another one?
It was an old one. It was a very old one that was off.
I'm sorry, I'm celebrating, but that's really, I mean...
So, it was a small one.
Bless him in disguise. Well, it actually is an example of why we made the change with our representation for insurance, because WSRMP's policy is different than Canfield, who we had previously, and then Canfield replaces the current value of a bus that's damaged, and...
Value of this bus was $7,000.
And WSRMP, if you have a bus that you have to replace, buys you a new one. So, that alone was, and other costs being not that much different, that was a very good reason to change insurance companies.
Yeah, the $7,000 obviously would not have been enough to buy us a new bus, and our, as you can see from the fund balance, we already have, we're already waiting on the delivery of a large bus, that's going to take 140,000 of it, so we wouldn't have had the money in the fund to purchase another small bus, and we would have had to do a transfer from the general fund. So, this, it actually ended up working towards our advantage at this point. So, that's where we're sitting at for all of our other funds, aside from a general fund. I did give you guys an updated dashboard for August with the forecast five reports. As I do, the accrual entries, these numbers are going to continue to change a little bit. Basically, bottom line, we're still sitting at about 9.61 percent for our fund balance percentage, that needs to be above that 8 percent. And then, other than that, you can see from the pictures, we're above 100 percent on everything because of the increased enrollment last year, and increased portion of dollars that ended up being received. So, aside from that, though, there weren't any major changes there, other than the dollar values, and the benefits, payroll, and supplies having changed with the accrual entries from September going back into August. So, do you guys have any questions about where we are with August right now, before I move on to September?
Mm-mm.
Okay, so, for September, we'll just start with the budget status report. Currently, our capital projects fund is sitting at 2.5 million for capital projects and for debt service. ASB is at 357,000, and the transportation vehicle fund is still at 152,000. We're not going to have the forecast five monthly budget reports for the month of September, because of all of the accrual entries back in August, the reports wouldn't be accurate. So, I actually technically just got the reports today that are accurate, but it's not, wasn't enough time to be able to present them here, so those are going to be presented next month. But, the exciting part of all of this happens to actually do with our enrollment. So, our enrollment is up 72 over where it was in June of, or technically, May of last year.
Wow.
It's up 43 over budgeted, which is good news, once again. So, that's really going to help.
Good news if we have space for it.
Well, we're going to talk about that.
Yeah. Dana has a whole...
I feel like you beat my attention on that.
Exactly. So, it is a lot, that's an entire busload of children.
Yeah.
So, that's three classrooms. It is quite an increase from one year to the next, especially since the last four years, we've been trending the exact same, anywhere from 60 to 75 additional FTE per year. So, we actually were just talking about our wonderful FTE increases today, and brainstorming some ideas. Our fund balance as of the end of September, it looks a little scary, because it's September, and we do a lot of suspending in the beginning of the year to get ready for the rest of the school year, so we're at just under 2.2 million, so 2.19 million. But, October, we get our property taxes, so we're going to see a huge spike come October. So, it's a tad bit low right now, we're going to, we'll be able to build back on that in October, though. Do you guys have any questions for September, August, or...
Do you have that, is that, was that...
Mm-mm, it's the budget status report. It's this one.
They can't see it.
Yep, there you go. So, this has a lot of numbers on it, so basically, the number you're going to be pulling is on the, towards the bottom, and it's going to say 2.19. There you go.
There it is.
That's our ending fund balance for the month of September. So, yeah, is there any other questions or comments?
Minor comment.
Okay.
Going back to the bus, about time we had one in our favor.
Yes, exactly, no, I totally agree. It was, it was a super unfortunate situation that ended up happening to have the accident happen, but when everything was said and done, and I found out that the frame was bent, we were all crossing our fingers that they totaled it, because that does work in our favor.
I'm just remembering the bus engine that blew up the day after, it was no longer...
The warranty?
Yes.
Correct, and that was 15,200, so, perfect.
They should have extended that for goodness.
They gave us a little, like, discount, like, $5,000 or something, that was their goodness.
Of course.
Perfect, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ashley.
Thank you. So, the next thing on the agenda is, I included in your board packet a copy of a letter that we received, and I invited the people about whom the letter was to come, so they could be recognized at the board meeting. So, this is about Nurse Catherine Shutey and her cohort.
Have this offer standing.
Nurse Kathy Ripley.
Well, she talks about, yeah.
And this is like, the kind of a letter, it's always such a pleasure to get, because we know all the wonderful things that happen for kids in our school because of people like Nurse Shutey, and she has gone so far above and beyond, as you know, the work that she does every year to analyze the visits to students, of students into the nurses' offices, and the needs that are met, and the areas where we might need to look at improving, and really helping our district spend some time looking at our data about our nursing services as well, is also why we've been able to add to nursing services over time, even though we need more. But certainly, we appreciate her so much, and I do have to whine a little bit, because she is in graduate school now, and has gone down to a part-time position with us, and unfortunately, as she continues to move forward, we may not get to keep her forever, so I wanted to take the opportunity to compliment her so much, and share the compliments that she received from Olympic College. So, this letter came from Olympic College, and just said, "Permit me to compliment your outstanding school nurse Catherine Shutey. Last week, she traveled to OC on her own time and educated 70 nursing students in the proper way to screen hearing and vision in K-12 children. Nursing students benefited from her expertise. Your students will directly benefit from her efforts when our nursing students come and assist with the screening. Our future nurses are thrilled that they will have hands-on experience with testing and not be delegated to keeping children quiet while others do the testing. Catherine has provided a win-win situation for our community, and I wholeheartedly second that. They were also grateful to Nurse Kathy Ripley, who accompanied Catherine Shutey, and on her own time, and introduced herself to the OC employees, who will help her continue arranging community partnerships in the years to come. So, sincere thanks from Mary Hackey at OC, and I just thought this was really important information to share with you, and Catherine, would you like to say anything?
Yeah, I really appreciate the acknowledgement and the partnership that we developed over the years with Olympic College. In the fall, school nurses are tasked with screening the near and distant vision, as well as hearing, for K through 3, 5, and 7th graders, which is a large group of students. The kindergartners are particularly challenging, because they're learning to stand in a line and follow directions for the first time, let alone raise their hand when they hear the beep. So, I really thought about how to make this easier on us, we definitely need the help, and local Lions Club usually helps out with this, but allowing nursing students to come in allows Lions Club to move to other areas in the community. So, we bring in probably about 30 nursing students in their first quarter of nursing school, and so they're very eager to get their hands dirty, and get some kind of clinical experience, and I really enjoy showing our students here what nurses can do, and hopefully inspire them to become a nurse in the future. And I really like to show the nursing students what it means to be a nurse in a community, which they may not get that setting in the future. So, they're very eager. In other districts, they're invited, but they're kind of tasked to just help get the line going, and so they were amazed that we actually let them do the hands-on screening, and they're also able to kind of look at the growth and development of the different students, and that really helps them along with their practice. I'm very, very appreciative of the partnership, and I hope that it continues even when I'm not here anymore, and thank you so much.
We mean when, so this is...
When, yes, we're saying goodbye. Well, you want to explain what you're doing, because it's very exciting.
Yeah, so, I'm in a doctorate program at Wazoo, working on my doctorate nurse practitioner, it's a three-year commitment, and as I go along in the program, I have clinical responsibilities as well. So, this will actually be my last year in the school district.
Oh, yeah.
So, trying to lay the foundation, and I'm telling students that if they really miss me, they can come and see me in three years when I practice in the community, so...
I know from, I don't operate on the level that you do with Madison, but I do know that paying it forward in your craft is huge, and I remember I was learning, there's always something about someone who's doing it, actively doing it, coming in and teaching and passing it on, and that's always, I mean, if you inspire one of them, I'd see the better.
Yeah, and I, in the spring, I actually bring OC back, and bring our into BSN nurses in, so they're registered nurses who have gone back to school to get their bachelor's, and they've done, I think, for the past three years now, community health projects in our school district, so they've taught teenage about healthy relationships, they've taught about vaping, or not to vape.
Yeah.
They've taught about dental health, just a whole plethora of topics, and I think we've actually inspired a couple of them to go into school themselves, so it's been a great privilege.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
You are going to be very missed, and we're glad you're here for the rest of the year.
Yeah.
Little comment, I have really appreciated that, I can't remember how, but you call it.
Oh, the nurse's note?
Yes.
Yeah, I was going to say something, too, that was great, yeah. Are you going to look at getting your own practice?
Eventually, yeah.
Yeah, okay. You have to make sure everybody knows about it, so we can change our doctors, and...
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you. Thank you. If we just click on the PowerPoint, next. All right, so it's that time of year in October and November, when we talk about what we're doing to improve our practice for students, and faculty, and for student outcomes in North Mason, and so we're changing the calendar just a little bit this year. We're going to talk about the broader picture, because we're looking at things somewhat a little bit differently, sometimes a lot differently, and then our past practice has been to bring in the elementary principals one month, and the secondary principals another month. We've changed the calendar a little bit, they're all coming together next month, because a big part of what we're trying to do is make sure that we have systems in place, rather than really great things happening here, and different really great things happening there. So, we'll go ahead and just talk about that a little bit more. One of the things, we sat down last year and looked at a variety of data, we had input from community members that led us to question some of the things we were doing or not doing throughout the district, and from staff as well, and so I sat down with, as you know, and with you, and we talked about three areas of specific goals that I was going to report on to the board over the year, and so the, those goals have been woven into the work we're doing as our, in our district improvement plan, and that we're doing with our buildings, and those are in the three areas of strengthening systems for learning, strengthening culture for learning, and strengthening academic engagement. And when we talked about those goals together with the board, we talked about what that might look like. So, if we do those three things, if we have stronger systems, and a stronger culture, and deeper engagement, then we think that we will see things like increased rigor and academic supports available for all students, safe and effective learning environments, communication that's effective within the buildings, and with the community, between all stakeholders, and targeted planning for school improvement through our needs assessment process. And we're going to look for evidence in things like our CEE data that we started collecting last year, through our academic data, and hopefully improvements there. We have some just visible things that we can see already with the preschool and its new home, and as we start planning for the expansion of that, kindergarten has begun some changes in building a more play-based learning environment, and ultimately, looking at more play-based curriculum as well, and then the implementation and development of our multi-tiered systems of support programs, the introduction of the student health center, which is in operation right now, even though that's in our two buildings, and we did finally get all the approvals we needed to do the changes to the old music room, so that, they will be able to move into their home soon. And then, also, we will have reports on the implementation of Avid at the high school, all of those will be some of the data that we'll have to come back to. As you know, this, the board has set a vision and a mission for the district, that all students will meet or exceed high academic standards by acquiring the knowledge and skills essential for success on state and national assessments, post-secondary education, and the world of work and citizenship. And last spring, at least once, either myself and/or other staff came and reported to you, and we had the posters on the wall over here that we had done, where we listed all the different initiatives, or activities, or things that teachers and principals and support staff were trying to do for kids, and as we put all those things together, we kind of came up with this chart of some areas that were, they all fit within, and then we kind of started to organize the chart, and we saw that what we were really doing was what we wanted to do, but we were doing so much of it, and so much of it independently, that it wasn't effectively braided, and it wasn't effectively helping us move forward for kids. So, through that, we came to the realization that we have to simplify what we're doing, look at which pieces can be excised from the pile, and how do we focus better so that we can improve the experience for the whole child, which will improve the environment and the outcome in the whole school, and ultimately, benefit our whole community. So, in strengthening systems for learning, we said we were going to look for things like enhancing social and emotional supports, increasing the rigor and expectations for students, and enhancing collaboration, and then growing partnerships throughout our community. And so, some of the ways we're seeing those things start to take shape now are through the targeted planning for school improvement that began and is ongoing through the needs assessment process, the implementation and growth of an instructional coaching model of job embedded professional development to support our staff, and as, in real time and as needed with problems in the classroom, the implementation of an MTSS, multi-tiered systems of support plan, so that we're supporting kids in all of the areas, in the whole child, in the social, emotional, in behavior, and in academics, because we've been doing some excellent work on academics, but we have been challenged more and more with problems that kids are dealing with, with social, emotional, that result in extreme behavior problems that prevent progress from that, those academics, so unless we address that whole kiddo, we can't get to where we need to go, and so we're moving forward with that. And then, we're working on the development of a common decision-making model, so that we're always looking at data, or looking at a question, collecting data, using the data to come up with a hypothesis, testing that hypothesis, and then going through the cycle again. And then, the implementation of preschool is ongoing, and we're very excited that they're in their new home, they will be featured in the newsletter that is going to be out to our patrons next, early next week, probably as early as Monday, and a more thorough and strengthened implementation of PBIS through our system of multi-tiered systems of support. And so, I'm going to ask Beth, since she's here, to just interject right now, because she's collecting some great data on where we are in the multi-tiered systems of support implementation, and so...
Yeah, I'll just take a minute. We looked at this today at Cabinet, it's pretty new information, so even our school leadership teams who are helping gather this information, they're still in the process of even going back and sharing it with their staff, so some of our staff may not even have known where we're at. But, what we're doing this year, I've set up kind of a professional learning plan for our school team goals that we have, so I've asked them to invite me to their leadership meeting for at least one hour a month, so I have, you know, 10 one-hours that I'm going to be meeting with them, and then in October, February, and May, they've committed to spending two hours in an evening session with me. So, wrapping up October, and what we did before that two-hour session, was we went through a rubric that I did not develop, but came out of work, University of Oregon, it's called a tiered fidelity inventory, and it's really developed around a PBIS framework. But what we, some work we did as a district team last spring, when Dr. Benner was working with our group, was how could we integrate what we want to do for all kids, for behavior, and integrate the social, emotional things, too. So, it's a rubric that is very unique to our district, and we added some social, emotional items to the rubric, and I'd be happy to share that if you guys want to look at what those things are. Fifteen, fifteen items that help our teams know, once we are at 100 percent, that we have a tier one plan for behavior and social, emotional skills for everyone in our school. So, they went through that rubric, and I just guided them and answered questions, I wasn't a voter at the team, but they rated themselves on these 15 questions, and you can see where our tier one, our system for all, is at each of our schools. I apologize... I apologize, James Taylor, we're meeting on Monday, so I didn't have their information. But, so you can see we have some work to do and it was very clear, they were like, wow, I know exactly what we need to do, we have this in place. But yeah, we have an action plan for the year. So you can see, I asked them of the 15 items, pick two. We can't do all of them at once because we overstressed ourselves. So it was not me telling them what I thought they needed to choose. I literally let them come to a decision as a team. And they thought, each school had a little different response, but they all, I thought they were all good places to start. So in our two hours, we dug into, you know, what are the things the rubric says we have to have in place in those items that they're focusing on. So we're gonna keep focusing on those areas until we are at a higher score and then they'll move on to the next priority item on that rubric. So that's the process we're gonna use and once they get some work done, then they take that back to their school, to their school staff, present what their ideas are, and get feedback from their whole staff to make sure they're on target. So it's not even gonna be me going back to the schools, this is the work the schools are coming up with, what they think is best for their staff and their students.
Very cool.
So I was really pleased.
Can you go back one?
Yep.
So at the high school, focus area, I'm assuming that's staff and the student leadership is the.
Yeah, so unique, I'm glad you pointed that out, I wanted to say that. Dr. Benner again gave us this idea that really what you want to do is have your students take ownership of a lot of the behavior expectations and social-emotional learning. So we're gonna pilot at the high school, I'm gonna be setting up some time with the student leadership team and getting a group. We're gonna look at that rubric that the staff did and have the students rate where they think their school is.
That's a really good idea.
And then they are hopeful that a starting point that the staff thought was having the students come up with the school by expectations. So I haven't had the time with the student leadership team, but that's something we're gonna have them.
I guess what I'm getting at on that is what comes first, definitions or expectations?
So the staff are, at the high school are working on the definitions for their staff, but the students, are they gonna come up with? Yes, I see what you're saying, but I think we can do both at the same time.
And that's interesting because later we'll see a couple slides, we've started to get the community input on some of this defining what our expectations are for kids too, and we're having that same conversation. Well, when somebody answers that they highly value the word, you know, the idea of respect, is your respect and my respect and her respect all the same? Or then do we have to go back and calibrate that?
What I'm getting at on that one is it seems like, okay, from a student perspective, Spencer helped me out here if they come off, you know, the students wanna know what their expectations are. What are the expectations, what's appropriate, what's not appropriate, what's their boundaries? And maybe I'm being a little cynical, but, and that the staff is, well, getting bogged down in definitions.
It could be.
Possibly, there are two different things though. What the 1.5 behavior definitions is helping the staff really get on the same page with what's a minor behavior in my classroom, my school, that I need to have some strategies to work on in my classroom? And what's a major behavior and I'm gonna need some administrative help? So the staff are trying to just make sure they're aligned with what's minor and major and make sure I have strategies in my classroom. So it's a little different than the expectations for the kids to know, but they do go hand-in-hand. And we're building right now and implementing after it's all ready to go. So I'll, quicker on the next slide and then I am done. Each of those scores gets broken down into three areas. So there are a few questions about having a strong team that can do this work and that's what the blue bar is. The orange is kind of the nuts and bolts, what are the expectations? How are you gonna teach them to everybody? How do you respond when kids don't follow the expectations? So that's what the orange is. And then the gray is, do you have tools to evaluate to see if this is helping our system or not? So.
Hawkins is prepared.
And there's no right or wrong places, it's just where those teams are evaluating themselves right now in the process, so.
So that's an update, and we're gonna do this three times a year so we'll be able to see the progress of.
I was gonna ask how many times, that's awesome.
Thanks, Beth. So this paragraph, I'm not gonna read to everybody and the font is really tiny, but you also have this on the copy of the school improvement plan that you have in the board packet. And this is just explaining that we took a look at the needs in the district, at those braided initiatives, and then we looked at the data, including the anecdotal things that we had from some membership members sharing during board meetings. And through that, came up with our district improvement plan that really looks different because we determined that what we needed was to build and implement an effective multi-tiered systems of support system throughout our district. So our school improvement plan is actually our five-year plan for that process to happen. And just as a refresher, each of the, go ahead, next pages is just our, we start with a plan for a district MTSS team and that work is going on very well and Beth just explained a bunch of it. And then each school has a team that guides this work throughout the building. And then as we get further along, we build advanced-tiered teams to help us. You know, if we've got a really strong system or level one in place, then we're gonna start working on those levels two and three more systematically. We have things going on in each of those areas in all of our buildings and we have processes in place for kids, but we are not a system yet. And when we are a system, we believe we will be most effective. So that's what we're doing here. So part of strengthening the culture for learning means inviting our community to be a stronger part of our learning culture. And we've started that in some different ways for, at least for this kind of work. So we started by doing an online survey. We had only, we had about 250 responses initially. And you can see the little glimpse of those responses. We gave a list of, we had done work with the district MTSS team to kind of start gathering some ideas of values that we believed were important in our district, that we could see through looking at our board policies. For example, our civility policy, looking through the school student, student handbooks, what are the expectations we already have in place for people? But if we're going to be a system, then we need to have aligned expectations and to do that, we have to figure out what it is that we value. So we came up with some terms and asked people to kind of rank those as far as levels of importance. And then at the back-to-school nights at Hawkins and the elementary schools, they use the same words with some dot charts and ask people to put their colored dots on those words, those terms that were of highest value to them. We also had some of the leadership kids with some posters doing that at at least one of the football games. And then during conferences, they're gonna collect some more data on this and then we're gonna get the kids more involved, okay? So far, it looks like in all of the different ways that we've talked to people, the number one value that we hold in our community is respect. So now we need to define, if that's the value that we hold, what does that mean in North Mason? And how do we teach that and make that an expectation, whether you're in preschool or kindergarten or 12th grade? And as we strengthen the culture for learning, here's some of the things that have happened already. I did use a couple pictures here. One of the things that we're asking the board to do tonight and that you may have noticed in some of our social media posts or in our buildings is that we've asked our staff, why do you do what you do? And we've asked them, can we take a picture of you with a poster that tells us why you do what you do? And so I included some of their pictures in our presentation here. But we have things that are happening already showing that we're really focusing on. What is that culture that makes learning the center of what we do, but also creates a place where kids can actually do that? Given all of the inputs that are happening in their lives, positive and negative. So we're very excited that Mary E. Thaler Learning Center, after a two-year project, finally got to move into their new home and we're developing some new partnerships there. Kindergarten began looking at stepping back from the extreme focus on academics. Not that we don't want that academic success, but we think maybe that they'll, they'll make more progress if they're doing that learning in a play-based environment. So the teachers have begun to do some work on that. The Student Health Center is coming together. AVID is in its first year of implementation at the high school and you'll be hearing more about that next month. We, you can see the impact of the work already of moving Beth Bork from her position last year to be the MTSS administrator as we try to build these systems that we really don't believe we could have done the work so far that we've done if everybody was just trying to do it on top of, as part of their jobs. But having a dedicated person leading that work, doing the research and helping us move forward, we believe is really, really important. And then also we have additional support. We have a behavior support specialist, a teacher on special assignment who is providing some coaching, similar to the instructional coaching, but really coaching with teachers in their classroom in real time with real issues on how to make some changes for kids with extreme behaviors. And then we have pushed and moved some of our academic supports that have been traditionally, we've become school-wide title instead of targeted title programs K through eight. So some of those academic supports have moved to more of a push-in model. And then also I didn't, was reminded this afternoon in the cabinet meeting night, we're also looking at our literacy curriculum this year and we have a new adoption and our teachers will be really taking a good look at what kinds of materials we need to have in place for kids. And also strengthening our culture for learning, we've purchased and implemented second-step curriculum and bully-proofing curriculum in, throughout K through eight. We again have our behavior specialists supporting teachers. The elementary schools having, have developed, have brought in peaceful playgrounds. It's not just paint on the playground, but it's some lessons and tools that all the teachers are helping the kids learn on how to, how to use those new painted surfaces to play together more successfully and to learn some cooperation and different kinds of skills when they're having fun at recess. And then also I think it's important that we engaged in our partnership with Mason County to finance and have a school resource officer just on our campuses to support our needs for safety for kids in North Mason. And then as we, a lot of things that we've been doing all along, but we're working on, you know, perfecting or expanding in strengthening academic engagement for students. So we have Project Lead the Way STEM and Science Curriculum K through 12. We've added courses in engineering at the high school, some coding and those kinds of things. So we're very excited about what's happening. The implementation of AVID achievement via individual determination. We have some great things that we'll be hearing about from the high school there. Students are beginning to be asked to engage in helping determine what are the courses that we need to most meet your needs in the middle school and in the high school. So we're going to engage the students in some of that course development. The ELL program, we have a coach from OSPI supporting us in multiple buildings this year because areas that we've been identified with state testing where we need to show improvement is in our students who are second language learners in their math and reading test results. So we are undergoing an ELL program review with that coach that will help us determine how to best make some adjustments there. And our second language teachers are piloting a co-teaching model with some volunteers in the general ed curriculum areas in their buildings to better meet the needs of kids in the classroom. And then again, an area that, a tool that we use to strengthen academic engagement is to provide the support our teachers, especially our new teachers, need through instructional coaching.
Question?
Question?
How about a comment? Of all that, like what I saw, what you presented, I had one thing that just for me sticks out in a big way. Play-based kindergarten.
I'm very excited about that too. I was very excited when the kindergarten teachers were interested in having the conversation. And they've only just started. I mean, when we first sat down and we had one of them here, there was a lot of talk about, oh, we'll just do everything 100% different. And they were smart and said, no, we're gonna, we're gonna make the transition in a way that we can do and feel good about and make sense. So they're doing steps in that direction, so we're pleased with that.
My only hope is we're building a system that our kids, not the kids to fit the system.
That's what we're trying to do. And I don't, I think maybe in the past, we've tried to make the kids get to where we needed them to get on a piece of paper and we're trying to take, look at data that's student-specific and build what they need right now, so.
Awesome.
Yeah. Alright.
Capital projects?
I don't really have anything new to report. The, our Mark and Joan met with Mason County to review all sorts of things that they needed to do to make sure we're totally signed off and finished on the big building projects, that the last things can happen for getting the scoreboard up, that the health center can get completed. So all of those things are coming to an end and we're waiting to hear from Ray on some pricing for stadium roof. And then at that point, we'll be able to start planning a softball field in Centrex Field and we will then have spent all our money.
There will be no more capital projects report.
No, and then I, you know, frankly, since it's here and it's not really a secret, our numbers are going way up. We will have spent all our money. We will have done all of the things we talked about doing to the community. We are gonna have to talk about, not doing to the community, doing for the community, but that we talked to the community about, we are going to have to look at some new bonds and we are going to have to build some new schools. And we are gonna have to start those conversations very soon. And we'd like to have all of the work done so that when we have those conversations with the greater community, they can trust that we're gonna use our money effectively to get the things done that we need to do. But numbers are changing rapidly. The kindergarten at Belfair is at 101? 104? Not sure the last time, but.
It's a hundred plus.
It's big! It's very, very big. And several years ago, several years before I arrived, the district had done some adjustments with boundaries because Sand Hill was kind of bursting at the seams and we have a little bit of a different, the opposite problem right now. And even though we're gonna be looking at bonds, we're not going to be able to build a new school by fall of 2019 and we need some different spaces. So probably an interim thing that we'll be talking about and getting a committee together very soon is looking at changing the elementary school lines. When they changed that several years ago, one of the things that is interesting, if you look at the map, is that Tiger and Panther Lake are both riding the bus all the way to Belfair. It would be shorter for those kids to ride the bus to Sand Hill. And so Maureen is starting to do some work with me to look at, if we move those lines, what would best make it so we can have the appropriate-sized classrooms and appropriate numbers of classrooms, that we actually have rooms for classrooms at each building for the start of next year. So that is something we're gonna have to talk about. And we might have to add, at worst-case scenario, if we continue to get three classrooms of kids a year, even if we move kids around, it's gonna be tight. So that might mean bringing in some portables or a portable, but we can't put any more at Belfair. And so we're gonna have to adjust those lines so that any portables that come in will be at Sand Hill and Belfair will fit into its footprint with the number of students that they have for next year. So more to come on that.
I'm excited about that.
Can we linkage Planning a Message of the Month?
Mr. Patter?
Kai combined, I kinda combined that with her, I have the next board there. So I would actually kinda like to, I'll be right. To hit on our English learners.
They would love that.
That would be awesome.
They would be happy to talk to you about that.
Vibe to it, so.
Okay.
Meantime, I'm running one currently.
Then what it says to, like, yeah.
She said Saturday.
Oh.
Yeah.
And I need to get some more information from Ashley, actually.
Okay.
About that part. About that part and maybe maybe that before we go home or something like that.
Okay.
Some rough notes.
That'd be great. And our newsletter will be in mailboxes or in the mail on Monday, so that's very exciting. It features peaceful playgrounds, the preschool and sixth-grade camp. So, some exciting things and pictures in there. And then remember, the 29th is the, we sent you an email, is the joint board meeting with Mason County up or down south?
What is it?
The 29th, I think it's Monday.
I don't know.
Okay.
Where, where is it again?
In Shelton.
Furywood.
Oh, okay.
So, and basically, the purpose for that meeting, the superintendent from EST 113 is going to kind of lead the discussion. The purpose for that meeting is trying to come together as Mason County school districts with a common message for the legislative session. So.
All right.
Okay.
Assurance of organizational performance and policy review, our monitoring report, which this year, or this month is ER 13 mandatory policies. I would accept a motion to accept the monitoring report from the superintendent.
I would like to move that we find the superintendent's performance to comply with ER 13 on the mandatory policies.
Okay. And discussion? It was pretty straightforward.
It was the easiest one. We will use all the mandatory policies.
Yeah, you good on that?
I'm good.
All right.
Yep.
All's favor of findings, the superintendent's performance to comply with ER 13, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Policy review, ER 3, treatment of parents, students, staff, and the public. Any discussion on ER 3, ER 6, which facilitates our ER 7 asset protection? I was happy with how we dealt with it the last, the last time.
Good.
Good. All right. Announcements and comments? Would anyone like to make a comment, take an announcement? All right.
I, I have a quick comment for you guys. Just be really...
Your next.
Okay.
Announcements and comments, board and superintendent.
Yeah, traditionally, our November reports are on student academics and as we look, and academic achievement. And as we look at the multi-tiered system of support and meeting the needs of the whole child, we, we took a look at some districts that are also policy governance, that, that are maybe a little further down the road of meeting the needs of the whole child than we are. And they have some pretty different language for the two policies that we review in November. So, I will be giving a report on the current policies, but just to give you kind of a heads-up, I will be recommending some pretty significant changes that we'll probably want to consider having a study session or, or at least know we need some time in December to talk about those because I think we will want to consider some pretty significant changes to those two.
Are there any other changes, ups, forces coming up? What, any of those other policies maybe that we could maybe do a couple of bridges on and stuff?
Well, these are two pretty big ones. So, yeah, I think...
Okay.
Yeah. I can look and see if any of the other Es or Ers, but I think these are the ones we...
Well, good for what you're proposing to come up with, whatever it is, that's bread and butter for a school board, especially a policy governance school board. I look forward to those kinds of discussions. But otherwise, I'm still struggling with this computer. And I have the same problem you did, which is the password expires. You can't change the password until you bring this computer into school.
I know. So, I had a very long talk with tech this morning and they were set up that way, you know, for safety reasons. They are trying to find a workaround, all of the security things that we have to have in place for all, keep all of our data safe, but that would also allow you to get a new password from home instead of having to come on campus to do that. And hopefully, we will have a solution to that soon.
Well, that actually was, while it was the momentary crapple that I had this time, there's always other ones. And the main one, of course, is something that we can't do anything about, is that the DSL that this has to hook up to is the end of the line and everyone else, Haven Lake and Wooten Lake and Lake Christine and everyone before that has grabbed all the bandwidth before I get, I'm the very last person on the line. And so, even though we pay for this much bandwidth, I usually get that much brunette and that takes everything real slow.
If you sit in front of the Porta Duato, they have an upscaled version of that and there have been, if you come there because you're a community member, they'll let you use the, the internet and not offering it for them, but they do have the gold version that I upgraded before I left. So, just saying.
I have two things. One, thank you for the study sessions. I enjoy those. I did get a lot done there. Two, I forgot to mention this. I got to chaperone my son's fifth grade class. They went to the PUD 3.
Oh, cool.
Energy lab.
Neat.
I guess they hosted...
I heard about that.
From all of the county and I didn't know really what to expect, but I was pleasantly surprised. They put on a really good program for the kids and...
Yeah, didn't they get the most...
No, that was apparently Sand Hill.
Sand Hill.
Which I don't quite necessarily agree with.
I thought that was nice.
I wasn't there for Sand Hill, but it's just my vibe.
Oh, my goodness.
It was a really good, it was really informative, too. I loved a lot, so.
I saw his mask and how he was, the picture where he was all the gloves on and the...
Yeah.
Thing, yeah. The goggles.
Yeah.
That was pretty cool. Get him in. I had a couple of things. I, I got to visit Central Kitsap. I was picking up free glass, stained glass ends and I didn't even know it was Central Kitsap. It was just some guy out there saying, hey, do you want some free glass? And if you say free glass, I'm there with a bucket. So, I showed up and they use their stained glass class as material science instead of art. It was really interesting how they had it set up and the guy that actually teaches it isn't a teacher of curriculum. He's just an instructor and he's been doing it for like 30 years. But amazing work and the kids in there were doing really good. And actually, I was like, oh, you know, Central Kitsap, they have, they have a little bit of money, you know? So, I'm thinking, oh, this is going to be huge and whatever. It wasn't much different in size. They don't have pottery wheels. They don't have like the art like we have. So, where I was thinking, maybe they had something different than we had. It was, it was different, but it, it wasn't, I couldn't say it was better. You know, it was just different and it was, it was really cool to kind of get to look around and of course, get these really cool pieces of glass. They used some nice, it's a, it's an expensive habit. So, getting free stuff is awesome. My second thing is, is this morning I had to call the, the police department on a low-risk suspicion and the dispatcher asked me to say something maybe at the meeting because it is televised and to get it out to the community that if you see something, say something. If you feel stupid for calling in, because that's what I said. I said, you know, I feel stupid, you know, but there's a car and they were like at our bus stop and I'm on a dead-end road and there, it was just kind of weird. And there was a luring attempt yesterday at another, the road aside from where I'm at, not at a bus stop, but it was at somebody's house and the guy was going to come out and his daughters were getting in the car and there were people luring her out. And it, it was not the action of this person that was at the bus stop today. It was the action of what that person did this morning and that knowledge that I put together. And I'm like, you know, I just feel stupid if I didn't call, you know, that I'd feel so terrible if something happened. So, when I called, he goes, oh, thank you for calling and don't ever feel stupid. And he goes, actually, I want you to tell everybody on your street, everybody in your community. And when I told him, I was like, well, I'm on the board and I'm always, I always look around at bus stops. If there's some, I mean, I don't do it like I case, you know, other people, you know, and go to their bus stops, but I notice things like when there's a, maybe an old RV parked and it's been there for a really long time, right in where the kids catch the bus, I, I call the cops. You know, I'm like, hey, I think that needs to change. So, what the, the office, or the dispatcher said, please get that out to the community. See something, say something. Never feel stupid about calling. And even if it's a low-risk type of thing, that if you tell them it's low risk, if they don't have anything going on, they're going to send the cops right out there. But if they do have something going on, they're still going to come investigate when they have time. But it's something to get out to the community that sometimes we feel nervous or stupid. Like, I was like, man, am I just being a wiener? You know, but it wasn't. It was, it was something we need to do. So, never know who could have bad intentions. So, it was...
Always be cautious.
Yes, always be cautious. That's it.
Spencer, do you have anything?
No.
All right. Board self-assessment of the meeting and...
Man, no, where is it? I think I lost it. No, I didn't. There it is. All right. I like to read through them and then mark them off after. So, the agenda was well-planned to focus on the real work of the board and the board followed its agenda and did not allow itself to get sidetracked. I kind of enjoy when we do a little bit. Board members prepared for and contributed to the meeting. The meeting proceeded without interruptions and distractions. The board's deliberations and decision-making processes were public. Participation was balanced. All participated, no one dominated. Members listened attentively, avoiding side conversations. Work was conducted at an atmosphere of trust and openness and meeting participants treated each other with respect and courtesy. And with our three-people group, I think we did a satisfactory job, so all the way down. And our next group here is board actions occur at the policy level rather than the operational level. The board reviews policy each, or about each topic before discussing that issue. In writing additional policies, the board starts with a broad statement and becomes more detailed in a logical and disciplined sequence, although generally, yes, we do. We did not do that this time, so I marked that one in a. The board minimizes time spent monitoring past performance. The board routinely dedicates time to reviewing, improving its own process. The board clarifies priorities and values when considering potential outcomes, beneficiaries, and cost of outcomes. The board follows an annual calendar based on a plan for doing its work. The board chair helps the board efficiently conduct its meeting, of course. And the board spends most of its time deliberating issues, defining and clarifying its vision and linking with its community as opposed to fixing things. And the board supports the superintendent in any reasonable interpretation of its policies as always. And I say, yes, we are satisfactory with all those as well.
Awesome.
All right.
All right. Oh, the floor closed there.
Because the day's a different day.
Are we moving up our day?
Down our day, isn't it?
I think you already voted to do that. We did last, last time.
Last time.
So, this has no...
I don't know if we actually voted, but we just...
The date for the November meeting?
Yes, yeah. It's moved to November 20th.
The Tuesday after the normal... Yeah, so we'll be, we'll be at a Washington State School Directors Association conference the week before, the week before the 20th.
13th through the 17th.
13th through the 17th. But our next regular board meeting will be held here, November 20, 2018, 6:30 PM. End of that.
Did you say, what day did you say?
November 20th.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry.
Whatever about, you know, we're not going to meet again before we go to the conference and we haven't got all the details figured out yet.
Your itinerary is right there.
We have an itinerary, yeah, but how do I get the year forecast and stuff like that?
Yeah, we can talk about that. So, I have room for five people in my car.
Okay, we all go in the same day?
I think so. All except Spencer and Laura.
I'm driving.
What?
Me, I'm driving.
You're driving yourself.
I'm going to drive myself.
And Ms. Bode and Morgan are driving and flying together.
Yeah, so I have room for the rest of you in my car.
Okay, so you'll be in touch with us and...
We'll meet here and go, yeah.
Figure that out before, so I don't sleep through it.
What, when's the plane takeoff? Do we, we have that? I know where...
Two o'clock.
It's on the itinerary.
Okay.
Yeah. 2:45, so we have to be there by at least 1:30.
Way early. I remember there was like an accident or something that last time and everything got kind of crazy, so.
All right.
Okay. Boop.
You're welcome.